All right, it is seven o'clock on Monday, August 3rd, and we'll call this meeting to order. If anybody who is on the line could please mute their own microphones. We're getting a little bit of feedback and some TV sound in the background. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Gary.
Here.
Commissioner Baker.
Here.
Commissioner Boskus-Rath.
Here.
Commissioner Collins. Commissioner Miller.
Oh.
Commissioner Talantino.
Here.
Commissioner Twardy.
Here.
And Commissioner Collins did call the city manager and say he wouldn't be able to make the meeting tonight. So do we have a motion to excuse Commissioner Collins?
I'll make that motion.
Support.
It has been moved and supported. All in favor, say aye. Commissioner Collins is excused. Commissioner Miller, if you could unmute your microphone and if the rest of us would please mute.
I don't know if I'm muted or not.
Commissioner Miller will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening.
Can you hear me, Your Honor?
Yes, sir. Go for it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller. Great job. Before mayor comments and general announcements, I just have a quick one. I would like to, on behalf of the city commission, I would like to extend our thanks to Dr. Hanley and LSSU for providing us with these excellent masks. You can see this one? To make sure that your city commission and administration remain safe. And we know that LSSU students are moving back in and classes start at the beginning of next week. So we wish everybody at Lake State a welcome and congratulations for coming back. And we wish you the best of success in your in-person and online classroom presence, so.
Just real quick, Mr. Mayor, for the rest of the commission, those masks are in our office and we'll get them to you one way or another. Somehow we'll get them to you.
They were hard to hand out at the meeting tonight. Under B, Proclamations and Recognizations, we have none. Item C, Public Comment. Does anybody in the audience wish to make any comments on any of our agenda items? We do have a public hearing and you do not need to let us know at this time if you want to speak to the public hearing, but any of the other agenda items, if you'd like to give us your name and city of residence. We have authorization of a contract renewal for GFL, Green for Life. Consideration of the City Attorney Staffing Plan. Kind of a shorter agenda, so to anybody on the phone, if you'd like to unmute and let us know if you'd like to speak on any of the agenda items.
Does this included agenda item, the special item for cannabis businesses?
Nope, that's a public hearing and we'll ask for your name and city of residence when we get to that point. Thank you.
Thank you.
You bet. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item D, which is the Consent Agenda. Deputy City Manager Troyer, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Under the Consent Agenda, we have approval of city commission meeting minutes of July 20th, 2020. Item two, Acceptance of the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Meeting Minutes of June 9th, 2020. Item three, Acceptance of the Economic Development Corporation Meeting Minutes of June 9th, 2020. Item four, Acceptance of the Resignation of Ken Kavanaugh from the Planning Commission effective July 23rd, 2020. Item five is from the municipal designation of delegates for the annual business meeting. Item six is scheduling of a public hearing on a resolution to vacate the full width of West Sixth Street between Lot 1, Block 4, and Lot 15, Block 3, Joel's Edition Number 2, with retention of a 30-foot utility easement covered over the existing water main for the August 17th, 2020 regular city. Item seven is approval of the consent agenda items as presented.
Thank you, Deputy City Manager. Is there any commissioner that would like one of these items removed for further consideration? Or would you like clarification of any of the consent agenda items? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve? Commissioner Twardy, are you unmuted?
Sure. I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Support.
It has been moved and supported. Are there any other questions or comments in regard to the consent agenda items? Roll call, please.
Mayor Gary.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Boskus-Rath.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino.
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. On to move, item E, Special Orders of Business, which is Public Hearing on Ordinance 600-20, Establishment of Marijuana Facilities. City Manager Chapman, would you like to introduce and discuss this, please?
Hey, Mr. Mayor, this is the first step in the process regarding enabling the ordinances, enabling ordinances for marijuana cannabis facilities. This is kind of an item that the commission's been talking about before I got here. We had a workshop and some public, or workshop back in February, I believe it was. This was an ordinance that was presented to you at that time with some background information. Not too much of it has changed. Staff and I have gone back and forth on the ordinances and as such have brought it forward to you for consideration. So tonight, we would look for just the public hearing. We would look for some public comments during the public hearing and then we will follow up on the next meeting for a final vote.
Thank you, City Manager. Now what we'll do is we will open up this item for our public hearing. And we ask that you identify yourself for the record and let us know your place of residence. And public hearings are an avenue for public bodies to receive information and to find out what people are thinking in regard to our proposed ordinances. So we welcome your input and invite your input. And certainly a public hearing, you can speak and bring things to the commission, but what we don't do in a public hearing is we don't get into a back and forth dialogue. We're here to listen to you and to hear what your thoughts are in regard to a certain topic. And then when we're done with the public hearing, we'll open it back up to the commissioners so that they can give input as to what their thoughts are. And I think the city manager may have mentioned, but then this is the very first step and what we'll do then is we'll move forward, I think, in August and deliberate and talk about the ordinance. At this time, we will open up the public hearing on Ordinance 600-20, the Establishment of Marijuana Facilities. And we would invite anybody to speak. And if you could unmute your microphone and let us know your name for the record and your place of residence and we'll open the floor for you.
Don, I want to speak for a second.
Certainly. Could you give us your name, please?
Ishan Otto, 1570 West Three Mile Road, Suseymory, Michigan. So on this, on this ordinance that I'm looking at, you guys have some kind of minimum. It says on growing permit, no minimum processing, no minimum provision and no minimum. Then you get the map. And on the map, you have the whole, almost the whole business per eligible for the provision in center. So.
Hey Sean, can I interrupt you for a second?
Yeah.
Hey Brian, is it possible to put that graphic on Zoom so everybody can see it? While Sean is speaking, or?
Just give me a second, Your Honor, yes.
Okay. Go ahead, Sean. Sorry to interrupt you.
That's okay. So, so we, we are state approved already last year. So we, we have three already approved facility in the state of Michigan. And I think I lost you. Okay, so on this ordinance, you have the map with the whole business per on I-75, almost marked in red. And you have no distance between provision and center from any other provision and center. So it says no, this doesn't have anything in the ordinance that allows somebody to open a provision center next to each other. So what I'm concerned about, you're going to have about 20 dispensary or the provision center right on the business per next to each other. And you got the tourists coming in and all you see on the business per, a bunch of provision and center next to each other, next to all these hotel where everybody's staying. I mean, I don't know if that's a good idea. Usually, a lot of cities, they got a thousand feet minimum from each other. I mean, thousand feet is not, not a lot. So like an example, the Quality Inn has 1,600 feet frontage. The Big Lot, that Sabalot shopping center has about 1,500 feet frontage. So thousand feet is not a lot, but in this, in this, in this ordinance, you allowing dispensary to go right next to each other and I think that's bad for the business per. Another comment, I know you guys have some place, you have $500, 500 feet from the anniversary. I don't think you should allow anything by the anniversary. You don't want the kids walking right to the, right to the provision center and buying it back and forth. I don't think that's a good idea. 250 for matured, I think that's a short distance, should be 500 at least. I never seen 250. Then you have no, no max on the, on the provision. That's fine. I mean, that gives everybody the opportunity to apply, but it has to be, just like a liquor license, it should be like at least, at least 500 feet, not 1,000. But you just can't, you just don't want, you don't want 30 of them on the business per. It just doesn't look good. You got tourists coming in and you got 30 provision and center right on the business per when they come into the Sioux. That's the only thing I got.
Thank you very much, Sean. Those were good, good comments. And I certainly took some notes and I'm sure everybody else did as well. Thanks for your input.
No problem. And then, and then, and then, one more thing.
Sure.
I think the provision and center should be invisible. It shouldn't be a bunch of green sign and bunch of cross like everybody does in Detroit. It should be something classy, something private. I think it should be sign ordinance where it's not flashy. When you have tourists coming in, you got green light and green cross. That's what they doing on Eight Mile in Detroit. I think it should be a clean cut. And one of the things that I seen a lot of city that we tried to apply, they got 20 license for the last three years and nobody has nothing, done nothing about them. They just sit on them and they try to sell the site for profit. I think you should guys have some kind of ordinance saying, you gotta be approved in the state. You gotta have approval or pre-approval. They have three years to get that pre-approval. So there should be a pre-approval and there should be a time limit. You know, you have six month. If you don't do nothing, we'll go to the next person, you know? They should not sit on it. I mean, I seen in Burton, a guy, he's been selling a license for 40 years. He's trying to sell it for like million dollar. You know, you shouldn't, you shouldn't be able to do that.
All right. Thank you for your comment. All right. And then whoever the next person is, if you could give us your name and your residence, please.
Nick, you're unmuted. If you wanted to provide any kind of comments, you're the one highlighted right now. Nope, he muted.
I don't know if there's any sort of line or anything, but I'll go next if nobody else is in line.
Sure, sure. If we can get your name and your residence, please.
So my name's Alice Krieger-Pether. I live right down on Peck Street behind War Memorial, right downtown. I basically, I also go to LSSU. I'm one of the students enrolled in the cannabis programs there. I just wanted to voice support for the, the fact that the city is considering opting in and letting these kinds of businesses be allowed within the city. I just, he, I think Sean was his name, the last speaker, brought up a good point. I've seen most places around the state have more limits on like you can't have two dispensaries right next to each other. The feet, the amount of space between each facility might be something that you guys would look at. So I thought that was a good point. And I just wanted to also say about the last point. I don't know if there's really any difference between, you know, having a place right down near the university versus far away. I don't really think that's going to do anything to stop anybody on campus from accessing that cannabis. I don't know if that's just putting more restrictions on than is necessary. I also feel like having the school be so progressive and having these new chemistry and business degrees, I feel like we might want to be careful in putting a ton of restrictions on what LSSU can and can't do with businesses in the Sioux. I just, I know there's nothing in the works as of right now because of federal legality issues with state funding and with the school and all of that. But I don't know, I just don't know if putting a ton of restrictions on LSSU specifically regarding the cannabis allowed within the Sioux is a good idea considering all of the, all of the students that are going to Lake State's, you know, specifically for the prospect of getting into the cannabis industry. So I don't think we should look at the students studying from a scientific perspective, cannabis on a university property. I don't know if it's helpful or hurtful to look at them as kids who shouldn't have access or be exposed to cannabis. So along with the signage comments from, from the last speaker, it's, I don't know if there's, I don't know if those are restrictions that are fair to apply to cannabis. If you're going to have bars with big old, you know, booze bottles and stuff like that on signs at the same time, I feel like it should be applied across the board. If you're going to advertise for a mind altering substance, like they do for pharmaceuticals on TV or for beer on big signs outside of bars, I don't know if you should be able to say, you can't advertise flashy signs for cannabis. So, so yeah, basically, I'm just in support of the bill, in support of, you know, just, just combing through the ordinances and making sure there's not too many restrictions. But as it's written right now, I, I think it's fairly well-written, so that's basically all I've got.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Those were great comments and we appreciate hearing from LSSU student body and wish you success in the program. So that's great. Thank you for coming forward. All right. Any other comments on the proposed ordinance? Got a few other people online. If you wanted to unmute and give your comments in front of the commission? Going once? Going twice? Anybody else that would like to speak on, in front of the commission in regard to the proposed ordinance?
Same person speaking. I just have one more question if I'm allowed. Who, who, I don't know if it's you guys. I think it's the Zoning and Planning Commission, but would I be right in assuming that's who came up with the green zones and the red zones for provisioning centers, micro businesses and stuff? That's who proposed places on the map?
I think what we'll do is we'll have the city manager answer a couple of questions, I think, when we're all done with the hearing, but that's a good, great question for.
Okay. I looked at the map. I just wanted to know, I guess, how those decisions were made other than the zoning ordinances written. I would, if there were any more properties that, you know, weren't included but met the criteria or if the properties on the map were every single property within the Sioux that met the criteria listed by the ordinance. I guess that would be my question, so thank you.
Great question. Thank you. Okay, anybody else that would like to participate in the public hearing? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing and move to the commission. So we will get questions and comments and we'll go through the roll call. So Commissioner Baker, any questions or comments on the proposed?
Yes, I just want to say thank you to the city manager and the city staff for their hard work on, I think, coming up with a perfect ordinance. Sure, I think the comments tonight were very well thought out from the public, so that's something that we can look into. But I'm glad that we are finally moving forward, so thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you, Commissioner Baker. Commissioner Boskus-Rath?
Yeah, just a quick comment. I do agree with Sean on the distance. That might be something to look at. Otherwise, I think it's great. Glad everyone's getting involved, so it's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Miller? I didn't hear him, but it looked like he said no.
Sorry about that. I was unmuted. No, nothing for me, Your Honor. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Talantino?
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, I'm really happy both the way and the procedure that this has went down. I think us as a commission, you know, we don't pat ourselves on the back enough, but this is something I think we should pat ourselves on the back for. Instead of just jumping right in at the start, I think we did this properly. You know, this isn't about one commissioner, this isn't about another commissioner. This is, we did this as a whole, so I think this is very important. And I think we procedurally did this properly. I'm excited to see where this goes. And once again, you know, this was something that we as a commission had talked about. This isn't about one commissioner. This is about all of us. We procedurally, we did it properly. Yes, sometime government is slow, but I'm really glad that we did it this way. I do think we have our ducks in a row. And thank you, Mr. Sean Otto. I think he's got some great comments and I would like to see us maybe go in a couple directions that he mentioned tonight. But once again, I think we as a commission handled this properly as a whole and I appreciate it. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Twardy?
Sure, just want to ditto Commissioner Talantino's comments. Basically, that's the line that I was going to go into. And we've been talking about this for a long time. I feel very comfortable that the zoning department and the planning department came up with a great plan. I am interested in a couple of the things that Mr. Otto said. I know the reasons why we didn't put limitations between spacing apart because there are cities who are having a lot of problems who tried to space them apart. But I, but again, 250 feet from churches, maybe that is something that we should take a look at, whether that's right or not. And I also agree with the young man from the cannabis program that, who spoke about it. I think that if they're going to have a progressive, if they're going to have a progressive curriculum like this up at Lake Superior State, we don't want to make the students feel like we're separating them from whatever industry is choosing to come into town. So that was a great comment from him, so I appreciate that. And just great job on the commission, too. I think we've talked about this at length and we will make the right decisions moving forward. I'm excited to also see what happens.
Thanks, Commissioner. And it has been, I pulled out my file, it's about two inches thick and it's been a long time. There's been a lot of research, there's been a lot of training. And I really appreciated the training session that city manager put together for all of us as a commission so that we knew what Michigan Municipal League and what the attorneys were recommending. And I think that city manager and planning and everybody has, has put together a good zoning ordinance. And, and I think, as you said, Commissioner Twardy, I think both Sean and, and the gentleman from the campus had some great comments. And speaking of that, I wonder, City Manager, if you could just explain a little bit on how Mr. Freeman put the map together with the specifics from the, the proposed ordinance, I think it was.
Let Kelly is on. All right, say about that. So the properties identified in the, on the map, basically what we're doing is we're utilizing the existing zoning ordinances to allow where the different types of facilities can and cannot be permissible. So the highlighted properties are the only properties in the city that are eligible for some form of cannabis-related facility. So we just utilize existing ordinances and highlighted the breakout really is between your industrial type of processing and growing and then your commercial and some less industrious or less heavy type of uses like the dispensaries, the transports and the, one of the other facilities. Can't think of off the top of my head, but that's kind of how we came up with that. It's just the normal, normals, only ordinances that were already in place.
Thank you, City Manager. Appreciate that explanation. So there is no action required on this item tonight. I think as the city manager mentioned, we will be deliberating and discussing this on August 17th at our next meeting. So please, in the interim, if you have any questions or comments, reach out to the city manager. If you have any issues, certainly reach out to whoever your favorite commissioner is and speak to them. And certainly, we will take any of your comments into consideration before we take a vote on this ordinance at our next meeting. So again, on August 17th, we will discuss and have a vote on the Ordinance 600-20, Establishment of Marijuana Facilities. So thank you to everybody that came to listen. Thank you to the two people that spoke up on the public hearing. We certainly cannot make informed decisions without hearing from the public and, and we certainly appreciate that and we'll move forward as a commission. So thank you very much. We'll close that item and move on into F Communications. We have nothing on the agenda for that. So we'll move into G, Business Items. City Manager?
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For commission consideration up first is a request for an extension regarding the contract with GFL for refuse and recycling pickup. The city has had a contract now with what was Smith Sanitation is now GFL for a number of years. There's a provision in the original contract for two renewals. Staff would recommend exercising our Second Amendment or ability to extend it one more time. By extending it, you know, the costs are passed on to the consumers, the consumer-based mile or model. And the price of tags as presented would go up based on the Consumer Price Index, the CPI. So that's actually a pretty good rate for those tags. So knowing that, we would recommend staying with Smith Sanitation slash GFL the next couple of years. So we would look for a motion to authorize city manager to execute Second Amendment to the contract with GFL as presented.
Thank you, City Manager. So we'll go through the roll call and see if there are any questions or comments for you. So Commissioner Boskus-Rath? Any questions or comments on this item?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Miller?
No, Your Honor, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Talantino?
I'm good on that, Your Honor. Thank you.
Commissioner Twardy?
I'm good. Thank you.
And Commissioner Baker?
I'm good. Thanks.
All right. Commissioner Boskus-Rath, would you like to make the motion tonight?
Absolutely. Motion to authorize the city manager to execute the Second Amendment to the contract with GFL as presented.
Support?
It has been moved and supported. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Boskus-Rath?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Gary?
Yes. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you very much, City Manager. G, Business Items, number two. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next for commission consideration is a plan to staff the city attorney's office. As the commission is aware, the city attorney's office has been vacated for a handful of months now. In the interim, we have contracted with McGraw-Morris, more specifically Kevin Kilby out of Troy, Michigan. We were basically waiting for COVID to come up so we could figure. We were basically waiting for COVID to come up so we could figure out a staffing plan for that, but here we are. So presented to the commissioner are a couple of different options. I'll go right into my recommendation. I would recommend contracting out those various services that the city attorney would typically provide if we had one in-house. It's basically broken up into two main functions. There's the local prosecutor that handles any kind of ordinance violations and prosecution. Chief Riley has been working with the county prosecutor on a plan for that one. We wanted to ensure they had capacity and they were interested in handling it, to which they are. And then the second would be the general counsel role. So that's the attorney that would advise staff and I on ordinances or contracts or draft, whatever documents we need drafted. We would recommend contracting that out to a firm. One of the biggest things is this gives us the flexibility that we need to be able to pick up the attorneys that have that specialty. As we are all aware, the local government realm and the environment that we operate in isn't cut and dry. It's more convoluted and it gets more and more challenging every day. So it's important to have an attorney that can keep up on all those changes or is backed by a deep enough bench that the specialty is there in-house. So we would recommend contracting those two services out. So with the motion to, motion to accept the staffing plan as presented, that would do two things. We would initiate negotiations with the county prosecutor's office. We would have a draft contract come to the commission for consideration. And then we would start a request for qualifications process with various firms. There would be an interview and probably a question and answer session with the commission. And then you'd make a recommendation on those firms and then we would contract with one to serve as the primary firm. But, you know, in example of a case like another big tax tribunal, we may even step away from that firm and just go to another specialty. So it leaves us a lot of options to be able to hire the firm or the attorney that would best fit that challenge. And you're not, you know, at the same time, you're not having to pay another attorney to kind of sit there while another firm is handling it. So there's not, you know, there's not two expenditures in that scenario. There's a couple of other options. We can keep with the current model that the city has had for a long time. The model works. There are some issues, but there are some benefits to it. And then just as another option, we could hire a full-time attorney, but the costs associated with that would be too astronomical for us to really afford. So realistically, the options are either to contract out those functions or continue on with the model we have where we try to find a local attorney or a local firm to fill in that role on a more full-time, part-time basis type of scenario. So staff and I would recommend, again, contracting. I'm going to mute that. I apologize. Staff and I would recommend contracting out the services.
Thank you, City Manager. We certainly appreciate your in-depth look and I liked your attachment with the supplement with all the information in it. So let's go to the commission and see what their questions and comments are. Commissioner Miller?
I'm good, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Talantino?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm all for this. I think it's a great idea. I think this is very long, long overdue. I think this will save us money in the long run. I did, I did some research on city, our cities our size and I don't think a full-time attorney is actually needed, nor never was needed for a city of our size. So I'm all for this, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Twardy?
Yeah, I'm all for this too. I am wondering, do you have sort of a snapshot, Brian, as to what would be the cost savings to the taxpayers and to the city by going with the recommended plan?
So it's hard to say what the cost savings would be. The contract with the county is probably going to be about mid $20,000, somewhere around there. But we could have a huge savings if we didn't have any issues and we weren't really doing a lot. Or we could actually spend a little bit more money, you know, depending on the workload of the scenario. I do foresee a cost savings, but it's hard to say because I mean, it's just, it's all based on work and it just depends. But yes, you know, there will be some form of savings because the previous model had a salary, benefits, an extra clause for certain services that had to be paid out. So, you know, there will be a savings, but how much is hard to say.
Okay. Thank you. I think it's at least worth a look. I think if we don't look into other ways of doing things, then we're just falling short on our jobs. So I'm in favor of the recommended model.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, I agree. Like this is a great model, especially when, well, it gives us more leeway to hire, to suit our needs for the case itself. So good job, Brian. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Bospas-Rath?
Yeah, I agree with the rest of the commission. I think this is probably the way it should have been done a while ago. So this is, this all looks great. I, I think it's, I don't think there's anything that you left unturned, so good job.
Thanks, everybody. And I, I agree. I'll reiterate what everybody has said, that we've seen a lot of diverse circumstances in the last few years. And I think that by hiring a firm that has a diverse set of attorneys that specialize in municipal government, we'll get some that are certainly well-versed in election law, in municipal law, and probably in the dark store areas. And it will give us better options to make sure that we are well-represented as a city to make sure that we have the best defense possible. So I am in full support of your recommendation as well. So Commissioner Miller, would you like to make the motion?
Yes, Your Honor, I would. Thank you very much. A move to accept the city attorney's staffing plan as presented.
Support?
It has been moved and supported. Does anybody have any further questions or comments before we have a roll call vote? No, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bospas-Rath?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Good job, City Manager and Administration. We're done with our G Business Items. Now we'll move on to H City Manager Announcements and Updates. City Manager Chapman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Included in today's updates is the monthly assessors report, a couple of updates in there regarding some dark store cases. We have seen the state kind of catch up on some of their own internal processes as well as the federal government. So we're starting to receive the grant contracts and grant award notifications for the Alfred Park, where by Seafree, the Carby Dock, and those three grants. So we're going to start having some of those projects come forward to you for authorization to sign the contract, excuse me, sign the contracts and to set the budgets for those. So good things are happening. Those projects, which have kind of been delayed for the longest time, are now starting to move forward. A lot of that work is being handled by David Boyle, our new city engineer. He was on here, but he's not. But, but I'd like to praise him, but he's not here. So, so the big projects are moving along. The, one of the projects that's been kind of sitting out there too has been the, oh, the trail project, power canal, power canal trail project. That project's moving along too. We received an update on the funding. We're actually going to receive a little bit more funding with that one, but that project should be coming forward to the commission in the next couple of months to award bids and the construction contracts. So those projects will start next spring as well. So next spring and next summer will be the busy summer that we thought we'd have this year. All that work will happen next year. So we're still coordinating a lot of the tasks that have to be coordinated for those projects, but they're moving forward. So we're getting there. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, City Manager. I wonder if you or Deputy City Manager, City Clerk wanted to mention anything about the election tomorrow with our super precinct? Sorry to put you on the spot.
I didn't know there was an election tomorrow. Maybe Deputy Manager can handle that one.
Yeah, we have an election tomorrow. So of course, the polls open at seven, they close at eight. We are transitioning all of our three individual precincts into a super precinct at Lake State in the Norris Center and the Student Athletics Center. So voters that are wishing to vote in person will vote at the SAC at LSSU. Each precinct will still be individual, so there will still be three separate precincts and we'll have greeters at the door to help direct voters to the appropriate precinct. So it is a transition. It's giving us much more space. Voters will, you know, come in one way and go out the other. So we're hoping the flow of traffic for voters will be smooth. It'll give us the, you know, six-foot social distance that we have, will have the opportunity to spread out. So Lake State has been wonderful to work with, so I look forward to continuing this partnership. If anybody has any questions about their voting location, they can contact the city clerk's office or they can go to michigan.gov/vote. They can do a sample ballot, find out the voting location and whatnot. So appreciate our inspectors and wish them all luck tomorrow. And thank you for the voters being patient as we make this transition.
Thank you. And I saw a couple conflicting reports. Are masks mandatory?
No, the governor has clarified that in an executive order, order that masks are not required for voters. We would just ask that, you know, they maintain their six-foot social distance, be respectful of the other voters and our workers. And, you know, we encourage everybody to get out and vote. So nobody's required or mandated to wear a mask to vote.
But certainly, we'd recommend whatever mode makes it safest for all.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. That was a good update. Anything else, City Manager?
No, I didn't know there was an election tomorrow, just to be on the record. So that's it.
We hope to see you up there. Moving into item I, matters presented by the public. Anybody that would like to speak in front of the commission, certainly we invite your input. And it would be, as I said during the public hearing, we would listen to you and, and listen to your input. It typically is not a back and forth conversational piece, but certainly we'd love to hear from you. So if you wanted to unmute your phone and let us know what your name is and your residence for the record, we appreciate it. So there are quite a few people on here. So any matters presented by the general public? If you'd like to speak, if you unmute yourself, I don't think City Manager has the ability to do that. So just unmute and let us know that you would like to speak in front of the commission.
Hi, this is Lisa Young.
Hi, Lisa.
Can you hear me? Hi. I'm a resident. I have a very quick comment. I have three little kids and I, we frequent the parks. I know in the past couple commission meetings, the bathrooms have come up again and again. Just wanted to throw out a public comment about that. I have personally had my own children run into issues needing a bathroom over at Sherman. I ran into a lady, she was in her 60s or so. She was visiting and attending a birthday party with family out at Sherman Park a couple weeks ago and she could not find a bathroom. She was very angry, swearing a bit, saying she was going to get with the city officials and tell them her mind, speaker mind. She wound up saying to me that she was going to have to go behind a tree. So I just wanted to bring that up, that it is a problem, not for just little kids, but for some of the elderly or not the 60s elderly, but you know what I mean? She definitely needed a bathroom, had no way around it. She didn't live here, so she couldn't just run home. I've seen some Facebook lives. Derek Ahudicek brought it up as well. I know Commissioner Baker's brought it up and tried to troubleshoot how we can move funds around or pay for staff to clean the bathrooms and open them up. So I guess as a mom and I'm a nurse, I just hope that we can open up the bathrooms just for the sanitation of it. The convenience is nice, of course. We don't have to run home with our kids. And to have the running water and soap during a pandemic is a really good thing. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. I appreciate your comments. Well, well-stated. Anybody else that would like to address the commission? You can have up to five minutes of comments during this period, so lines are open if there's anybody else that would like to address the commission at this time. All right, seeing none, we will move into item J, which is matters that are presented by the city commission. So we'll go to the city commission. Any commissioners have any items that they'd like to discuss in front of the commission? Commissioner Baker?
I just want to thank Lisa for stepping up and speaking out. So I appreciate that. But also, I want to give a shout out to Debbie Jones, DTE, and all the volunteers that helped put in the amazing addition to our downtown. Lots of fun things for the kids to do, from the music flowers to new benches. It really has brightened up again our downtown. So kudos to you guys and thank you for your continued hard work in improving our community.
Good comments. They do look wonderful and certainly the color does brighten it up. Good comments. Any other commissioner? Commissioner Twardy?
Yeah, I just wanted to send a well wish out to the small business owners, the local business owners. I know that we're having to jump through so many executive orders right now, but I can tell you that business has been good. Portage Street was crazy today. I don't even know how many bags of popcorn I popped. Or I probably popped 75, 80 batches of corn. So I'm glad to see that the tourists are coming north. I think everybody's been very respectful. We haven't had any problems at either of our stores with customers not wanting to follow what we're asking of them. Everybody's extremely excited that we're still open. So just well wishes to the businesses and just keep working hard. I think we're going to get over this.
Great comments, Commissioner. Thank you. Any other commissioner have any comments? Commissioner Bospas-Rath?
Yeah, just real quick, I just wanted to remind everybody that, I don't know if everybody's noticed, there's a lot of student drivers driving around. So just be patient with those student drivers. There are several different vehicles with the student driver on the top or on the side of the car. So they're doing their best. So just throwing that out there, just a reminder.
Ever in their household?
I possibly do.
Thanks, those are good comments. Commissioner Miller, you had your finger up.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to say that tomorrow will be an election day. I know a lot of people probably might be scared to go out if you haven't already voted with your absentee and you think you can get out and vote. Please vote tomorrow. On a personal note, Commissioner Twardy, tomorrow's a big day for you. I hope everything works out well for you.
Great comments and we wish her luck. I know she's worked hard this cycle. So any other comments from commissioners? Seeing none, Commissioner Twardy?
I move to adjourn.
Support?
Been moved and supported, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much. Have a great night, everybody.